Good evening Wakefield and welcome to this meeting on this Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. We just concluded an executive session as published in the agenda. I'd like to note that this is a small group of us who are in studio, social distancing, but this is a virtual meeting via Zoom and broadcast on WCAT's live Facebook page. I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is a reading of the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next on the agenda is the public comment section. I'd like to note that we have changed the public comment process. For those who wish to participate, I ask that you identify yourself with your name and address, and I will call on you to read your letters. And as a general reference, it is best to be brief and concise, and to please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anyone from the public who would like to read a statement or comment?
I would like to read a statement.
Okay, could you identify yourself, please, with your address?
My name is Lisa Kothlik and I live at 5 Archstone Circle, Unit 302, Reading, Massachusetts, 01867.
Thank you, welcome.
Should I just go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Let me set my own timer.
Thank you.
Hello, Wakefield School Committee. My name is Lisa Kothlik and I teach 4th grade at the Greenwood School. I'm here today to specifically speak about the Greenwood School with regard to ventilation and air quality. After reading the most recent indoor air quality report done at the Greenwood in May of 2019, I am gravely concerned that staff and parents do not have a true picture of what is going on. In the 2019 indoor air quality report, there are a few relevant sections I will quote here. Quote, "Fresh air was originally provided by an air handling unit located in a large room on the ground floor that is connected to ductwork. Fresh air was drawn into the building through a vent in the basement. Air was drawn through heating elements into a fan unit that distributed the air through ducts to wall-mounted fresh air grills in classrooms. This ventilation system appears to have been abandoned and was recommended to either be refurbished or sealed in 2002 by a private consultant as well as the MDPH. These non-functioning ducts and vent openings may serve as pathways for particulates, odors, and moisture from the basement. Because this system has been abandoned, no means of mechanical supply or exhaust ventilation exists for the majority of the Greenwood Elementary School, leaving openable windows as the only source of fresh air. Additionally, quote, 'All of the classrooms having full occupancy had elevated carbon dioxide levels. This condition is an indicator of poor air exchange that may allow commonly-found indoor air pollutants to accumulate in these areas, thereby increasing indoor air quality complaints. Occupants should use openable windows and ceiling fans slash portable fans to improve air exchange and reduce IAQ complaints.' Finally, at the bottom of their report, there are 23 recommended short-term measures to be done to improve air quality, and then one long-term measure of installing an HVAC that will, quote, 'require planning and resources to adequately address overall indoor air quality concerns.' After reviewing this report and emailing facilities asking if Greenwood has an HVAC system and if any changes have been made since the report came out, I was told that Greenwood does not have an HVAC system and that, quote, 'All windows will be functioning with screens so the school will have access to fresh air with the windows open. There was no mention of addressing the 23 short-term measures and no HVAC system has been put in. If the only way that we are able to keep ourselves and our students safe is to have the windows open 100% of the time and the fans on, this is absolutely not an acceptable solution. Once it is around mid-October, temperatures drop considerably, and with no way to keep children safe and the windows closed based on this air quality report, we should not be attending school in person, period.' This public comment is supported by the following Greenwood staff: Katie Frazier, kindergarten teacher; Kathy DeVasta, kindergarten teacher; Kim Morris, 1st grade teacher; Kristen Harper, 1st grade teacher; Michael Swift, 2nd grade teacher; Melanie Recupero, 2nd grade teacher; Jason Wallace, 3rd grade teacher; Andrea Bram, 3rd grade teacher; Kathy Holland, reading specialist; Jean Buckley, library media specialist; Angela Driggers, Metco paraprofessional; Kate Angenheister, kindergarten paraprofessional; Karine Keys, paraprofessional; and Robin Littwack, occupational therapist. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment?
I would like to comment.
Thank you, if you could introduce yourself and with your name and address, please.
Sure, my name's Liz Daly Ortega. I live on Plymouth Road in Wakefield. I'm the parent of two school-aged children as well as an educator myself. I want to begin by thanking you all for the work and energy that's gone into planning for this upcoming school year. I know that this has been an enormous task. That being said, I didn't want to miss this opportunity to offer my public comment regarding the high school logo that I submitted earlier this school year, I'm sorry, this summer. As the leadership of Wakefield Public Schools wrote to all families on June 4th in response to the murder of George Floyd, I was encouraged to read that they, quote, "denounce all forms of racism and hatred." The letter went on to voice their commitment to, quote, "create meaningful and lasting positive change that addresses systemic racism," and to look for opportunities to listen, learn, and get feedback. As a parent and educator, I share this commitment. As a reflected, I thought about the Wakefield Warriors logo and how it does not represent the values expressed in their letter. I want to be clear, the name is not the issue, rather the caricature of a Native American that is problematic. It is my hope that this issue can be explored by students, families, staff, and the school committee moving forward. As one can learn with a quick search, the Native American mascot controversy has been at issue since the 1960s. The Washington Redskins made national headlines announcing their plan to change their name and image just this past month. The Cleveland Indians are going through a similar process. In 2016, our neighbor and rival changed their names from the Melrose Red Raiders to the Raiders and removed all Indigenous imagery. At issue is the stereotyping of any one group, whether positive or negative, and that the promotion of false or misleading associations between a group and an attribute can foster disrespect. As a white woman, I'm not here to speak on behalf of Indigenous people. As a resident newer to Wakefield, I'm not suggesting the creation of the name and logo was done with any mal-intent. On the contrary, I'm aware many hold the Wakefield Warrior with fond memory. I've learned a resident of Indigenous descent helped create the name in the 1940s. However, this does not mean that all people of Native American heritage share his views. Additionally, much has changed since the 1940s, including the view of using Native people as mascots. The state of Maine recently passed a law that bans the use of such images as stated in a 2019 TED Talk entitled Indigenous Peoples in Maine Are Not Mascots. This again points to whether the intent of the logo was positive, the impact on students, families, educators, and visitors can be harmful and therefore problematic. In conclusion, I refer back to the June 4th letter. Quote, "As a community, we must ensure that our shared values are reflected in the work that we do with all students and families in our community. It is not enough to have the majority of our students and families served well by our system, it must work for everyone. I encourage you all to think about this and add this to an agenda item for the upcoming school committee meeting once the opening of school has been rectified. Thank you for your attention."
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to make a comment? Yes, please, Melissa, if you could introduce yourself with your address and name.
Absolutely, I'm Melissa Quinn. I'm at 753 Main Street in Wakefield, Mass. I'm a Greenwood parent of a 4th grader, and I just wanted to support what Mrs. Kothlik was saying earlier. I did some quick math, and in a 2019 HVAC study, it looked like the library had their windows open during the study and had a much lower concentration of CO2 in it, and I just compared it to another room that was on the same floor on the same day, and it looked like it had about 32% less CO2 concentration, particles per million, than the other room. So I just wanted to mention that when I was extrapolating that, assuming that opening the windows reduces the CO2 particles by 30%, more than 40% of the rooms in Greenwood still exceed the Department of Public Health's recommendations for CO2. For example, the room that Nora was in last year was, even if the windows were open and it reduced the CO2 concentration in the room, it would still have been 973 particles per million, which is still 50% higher than the 600 particles per million that's recommended by the Department of Health. So I just wanted to put it out there that opening windows is helpful, but I'm just wondering what other accommodations are being made at Greenwood to get the kids and the staff safe and clean into the building. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to participate in public comment? Okay, seeing none, I am going to move on. Thank you. Do we have a consent agenda?
Yeah, I moved the school committee approved minutes of the August 4th, 2020 special school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the August 6th, 2020 school committee finance and facilities subcommittee meeting, the minutes of the August 11th, 2020 school committee policies and sub-communication subcommittee meeting, and the minutes of the August 13th, 2020 school committee finance and facilities subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote? You're muted, Judy.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Vayer?
I think she dropped out again.
Yeah, I don't think she has access to this meeting right now.
Okay.
Oh, she, okay. She's here.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Callanan?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, I just have a couple of things that I wanted to share under chair comments. I just first would like to read a brief statement about the recent vote to reopen schools. At the meeting on August 12th, the school committee with a 6 to 0 vote approved the superintendent's recommendation to open schools in September in a phased-in, remote-to-hybrid plan. And since that vote, I've been asked many questions about individual school schedules. And of course, we always welcome questions and comments from the public, but tonight I thought it was important to clarify that the school committee only approved the recommended plan on how to open schools, meaning remote, hybrid, or in-person, not on details on how each individual's school schedule would look. That decision was a result of many weeks of work from the superintendent's reopening team and district leaders. I do have here on the agenda discussion, if anybody has any comments or would like to discuss that, we can move forward and do that. Okay, great, seeing none, I'm just going to move on with my next comment. I wanted to have a brief discussion, if we could, about our meeting format. Because of the pandemic, obviously, we've had to make many changes in the way that we hold our meetings. And, you know, obviously, for example, early on, we were all remote via Zoom, and now that the state guidelines have been relaxed a little bit, we are now able to meet in a hybrid-type setting with five of us in studio. The reason that it's only five is because Ryan and the WCAT staff also needs to be in the studio as well, so that reaches our capacity of 10. And since this, questions when this could possibly change, or if we should in fact meet in a hybrid setting, have been raised to me, so if anyone has any questions or comments or would like to discuss this, now would be the time. Yes, Tom?
Thank you. Thank you, Amy, I guess, for putting this on the agenda. I guess I put myself in the category of a person that doesn't care for the split format. I fully appreciate the dynamic that is before us, but I do not think that having a split school committee in this way lends us all to seeing, participating, and hearing, and following along in the same way at the same time. I would prefer that either we all be in the studio, or we all be remote until such a time as we could all be in the studio. I don't know enough, nor do I want to pretend to, I don't know enough about, you know, the square footage of the studio, and could we actually get 11 people in there socially distanced? I probably bet we could, but it's not for me to say, nor for me to go out and start measuring, so I'm not going to do any of that. I just, since you put it on the agenda, wanted to say that I do not care for the split format. I don't believe that it provides all members, both of the committee and of the community, equal presentation and equal access to the same meeting. Well, I prefer either to be all in studio or all remote. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comments? Yes, Colleen?
Tom, can I just ask for clarification on our administration? So if our school committee members were to participate remotely 100% and our administration participated in the way that they are now, Doug, Kara, and Christine, does that make sense, or would you prefer that our administration and our school committee members are consistent?
So I guess, I honestly hadn't thought very much about how to further subdivide the group, to be honest with you, Colleen. I guess my quick answer to that would be I'd prefer us all in the same place at the same time. So by, you know, by splitting the group into smaller subsets, I'm not quite sure it gets me where I think we should be.
Okay, just one, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Suzie?
I'm gonna try. Can you actually hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I was one of the people who was pushing to get us back in studio because I didn't think that it reflected well if we were saying it's okay to bring teachers and students back into a classroom and yet we're not able to meet together. I think that sends the wrong message, and I think we needed to all be back in the studio. I also respect that the WCAT team needs to do what they need to do for their team following the guidelines that they've been given as to how many people they can have in the studio. I believe that we, I feel like we should all be able to get back in that room, and that maybe it is time to ask the WCAT team to relook at that and re-measure it and rethink it and see if we could get creative about how we get us all back in there. Because I respect Tom's opinion that having some of us there and some of us not doesn't feel like working as a committee and as a team. But I do think it's important to figure out how we can all be back in a room, because this is not as effective as it could be, and we're doing what we have to do, kind of meeting remotely, and I think we could be more effective if we were all back there, if we can make that happen. But I absolutely respect WCAT's need to kind of protect their team and abide by the rules. But I'd love to see us try to push that a little bit and see if we can get us all back there creatively.
Thank you, Suzie. Any other comments from some members? Hi, Mike.
Hey, I agree 100% with what Suzie just said to the letter. If we can all get together, we really need to try to find a way to do it if it's practical.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments in regards to this topic? So I appreciate everyone, oh, Tom, did you have something else to add?
Well, I was just, I just wanted, because Suzie makes a great point, I just wanted to, I was thinking a little bit more on that just in the last moment. I certainly appreciate the, you know, any sort of optics around, you know, us, you know, meeting, supporting a position of going back to school, excuse me, getting, going back to school and then having a remote meeting. I have no, that's certainly not my objection, not at all. In fact, I'm happy to be all in the same place at the same time. In fact, that's really what my purpose of me, you know, mentioning this, is that we be at the same place at the same time, hearing the same meeting, following along in the same way, interacting in an equal way. That being said, if WCAT can't fit 11 people in that room, then we have numerous other spaces. Let's move the meeting to another room, move it to the high school, move it to the library, move it to a conference room, move it to a place that is safe within the confines of the buildings. I'm all for believing that we should not be sending a mixed message. That is not why I'm making note about this. I don't want that to be sort of convoluted, that there's a different piece with regard to, you know, the safety concerns. I don't have those. So, but yeah, if we can be in the same place at the same time, I think that provides equal access to information, equal access to a full meeting.
Thank you, Tom. I also just want everyone to know that I have reached out to Ryan, and you know, of course, we're a group of 11, and then to accommodate the WCAT and their staff, you know, depending on any given night, it could be five or six, or sometimes three or four. But we also have to keep in mind that, you know, we could have people participating in public comment as well. So, you know, we have to make sure that we could accommodate, you know, or anticipate an undisclosed amount of people who may possibly come to the studio. So with that said, I have also asked Ryan if we could change the location, and that was probably three or four weeks ago, where, you know, it wasn't really an option, but maybe it will be. So I'm glad that we were able to have this discussion, and I will reach out to Ryan and try and move forward and see if we can come up with some options. So thank you for that. That's all I have, so I guess I can hand it off to Doug for his remarks.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us on Zoom and in the studio, we appreciate it. Just some quick comments and updates, and we'll kind of go in order. Since our last meeting, we have had the opportunity to walk through Galvin Middle School, to look at Phase 2 of the project that took place over the summer, where kind of they did a re-leveling of the first floor or the entryway that included the foyer, the library media center, and some of the rooms at the beginning of the 5th grade hallway that also included the project room there. And so we walked through with members of the engineering team and members of Bond Construction, as well as a member of the PBC, to look at the work that was done and to kind of discuss any items that were outstanding. And walking through, looking at all the rooms and all the work they did, it looks, Galvin looks spectacular. The foyer was a particularly difficult area due to the finishes and the slate tile that went in there, and the fact that the floor was so out of level. And the floor, the finished product looks outstanding, and I think in hearing from the engineering team, they're really confident that the helical piers that record this summer to hold the slab and kind of the re-leveling work that they did will kind of remedy any future settling that occurs to that space. So we're really pleased to be able to report that Phase 2, from a two-summer project, last summer was the first phase, this summer was the second phase, is complete, and it was turned back over to us. They had one outstanding item that they were going to look at, kind of leveling up the alignment of some doors at the library media center and possibly at the cafeteria, but that was it. So overall, really good news to report there at Galvin. We also did a walkthrough with our project managers at the Greenwood School. The Greenwood School is having a new roof put in, as well as some ADA accessible kind of changes to the building. So a new ADA accessible ramp was put in, which connects to one of our kindergarten classrooms, Kathy DeVasta's classroom, actually, and there's some work being done there to finish that up. The roof is complete with the exception of the, as I understand it, the metal coping, and there was some water damage that occurred due to a leak while they were installing the new roof, so that they had to repair the second-floor ceiling, and that's done as well. And so really, the outstanding items there are just rails on the ramp, and the new ADA accessible bathroom that is across from the main office is being tiled this week, so that should be ready to go. But we're really, really pleased at the progress that we've made there as well. So the only other project that we have going, go ahead, Chris.
Yes, curious, how did we fare on Sunday?
With the rain. The high school, not so well. Every place else, I think, okay, yes. So the high school, we had a number of leaks. So again, which just is further evidence that we're ready, we're ready for a new building. And so we also had a little water come down and go into the emergency exit doors in the gym, in the fieldhouse, and so, but that's where we're at there, Chris.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that's a very quick facilities update.
You know, a couple of people have obviously mentioned it tonight, and maybe this is, you don't have an answer right now, but the whole ventilation system, any sense of next steps in looking at that?
Yep, that was next step on my comments, Mike. So we have contracted with an independent engineering firm called, the name of the company's called Bala, and so we have, they started, they're actually starting tomorrow, and it should be about a week, they're going to do a complete assessment of our HVAC systems in all of our buildings. And so when that information comes back from them and that report is made public, we think we're going to have a number of things that we're going to need to take a look at and correct, and we'll work with DPW to do that. So the screen just went blank for a minute. Did you get that, Mike? Thank you so much. So just one other comment in regard to facilities. Doyle had a new sprinkler system put in, and they're just finishing up that project, and that should be good to go. And our director of facilities, Bob Shiroli, is having storage units brought to all buildings so that we can move furniture and any other items to, for safety reasons, to really promote social distancing, to keep students at a safe space from one another while we're trying to teach. So XX, for example, additional desks that we would not be using in a hybrid model, or tables, or anything like that, or if teachers needed to store things, they could do that temporarily in these storage units. So we're pleased that Bob has been able to kind of lead that work. So that's an update there. And so other things that I'd just like to share, moving on to other items, I included in this packet a draft of a calendar, and really what this is, is a snapshot of a bare-bones calendar. We're really focused on September and October. So our first day for teachers will be the 31st and the 1st. So next week, teachers will start professional development for 10 days, which will bring us to the end of what we are calling Phase 1 in our reopening plan. And then on September 17th, the majority of our students would be starting remotely. We think it's really a great way to start, because again, it gives us an opportunity to get people prepared to learn remotely before we need to go remote, right? And so what that will do is that will allow us to make sure that all students and families have devices, that they're able to connect to the internet, and that they're also able to access curricular materials. So those are just a few things. The majority of the time in the first few days is going to be spent really making relationships, not only with teachers, but with classmates as well. not only with teachers, but with classmates as well. So as part of the plan in phase two, we plan on continuing to provide services for our special education students that need to be in school, who have difficulty learning remotely. And we also will welcome back small groups of students, not entire classes, but very small groups of students, students that are new to buildings or new to the district. And that would include fifth grade at the Galvin, ninth grade at the high school, as well as our pre-K and K students. That will give us an opportunity to, to meet our K students and our pre-K students, will give us an opportunity to do some screening and meet parents and also really look at our class lists and how we're creating those. So we're pleased to, to announce that professional development starts next week for teachers. A good portion of the professional development is going to be done remotely, which we're pleased about. We're really thinking about how to, to kind of be most safe in how we're structuring our professional development. And to, just to say more about that, I'd like to turn it over to Kara to talk a little bit about the content and maybe she could also talk about our text talk that's happening this week.
Sure. All right. So yeah, so Doug definitely hit on, on the combination of things that we're planning for the first 10 days. We tried to base it on the feedback that we've received. WEA had given us some feedback. We've talked with instructional leaders, principals, just trying to get a sense of what people feel like they need at this moment. I think our, our mindset is to not try to jam too much into the 10 days because it is a, a long period of time, but there's also a lot we need to account for within those 10 days. And while we know professional development needs to look different this school year, it doesn't mean that we're, we're going to stop offering professional development throughout the school year. So the 10 days really reflects what we think people need to get going and to, and to get started in their, in their work with this very different school year. So, you know, without going date by date, I'll, I'll say there is time that we, we've structured by bringing in presenters based on feedback. We will have some social emotional support, training available to teachers. One of the early presentations that we just booked district wide would be with Jessica Minahan, who is a presenter and author of the Behavior Code, who does a lot of work on reducing anxiety in students and, and offering strategies to, to teachers. We, you know, in, in conversation with her around the training, we wanted to acknowledge, you know, the anxiety that I think a lot or most of our educators are feeling coming back to school this year and how we can empower them with strategies to support our students who might also be feeling anxiety with this very different school year. So I think that will be a wonderful offering across the district. We did have some teachers participate in her training this summer and we got really strong feedback on that. We also are working with Raul Fernandez, who is a professor at BU and he has been actually this week, started off text talks with different groups at different grade levels with our students and staff who are able to participate. And he's been facilitating that and that will continue on Thursday as well with our older groups as well. And he will be running training focused on implicit bias and breaking that out by level. We'll have an elementary, a pre-K elementary group, a middle school group and then a high school group. And, and the way we've tried to structure the trainings where, where people are participating and hearing, we're offering time afterwards for some debrief with colleagues to process the information. We've also booked a training focused on trauma-informed practices and just trying to give practical strategies to teachers for identifying trauma in our students and practical ways for supporting them. And again, that's broken out by level. We have, some of the work will be presented in a pre-recorded session to start where, where teachers will have a chance to just get some context for what the, the live training will look like. And, and then we're, we broke it out by level again to have live interactions around trauma-informed practices. And then in terms of curriculum planning, we've also built in time for, I know that there's, there's a lot of talk and stress around curriculum planning and what that will look like as we start in a remote setting and what our priorities will be. So we will be working with instructional leaders within the district to plan out time to plan, for lesson planning and just really talking about what high quality remote lessons look like, how they should be structured, how time should be chunked and managed, appropriate amount of breaks, and that again, will be by level so we can support what that remote teaching component can look like. So we'll have time for that as well. We're also working with Elliott Services. They're offering some live webinars as well, again tackling the, the social emotional component for people. And then in terms of the tech piece, we, we felt like we, we didn't want to overload people with training within the 10 days. We think that, you know, I think a lot of our teachers have been researching things on their own and looking into things or might already have a skill set in certain areas. So we really tried to narrow it down with the understanding that we're going to keep support available throughout the fall for teachers. We had sent out a list of tools that we were endorsing as a district, which meant that we bought licenses for, for all of our teachers to use certain tools that we felt were highly effective. For the 10-day training, we're focusing in on Google Classroom. And while a lot of our teachers have been using Google Classroom, some haven't, and this is a, Google Classroom is something that we, we will be seeing across all levels as a consistent platform for teachers. So we're providing training by level again on that with a pre-K elementary focus, middle and then high. And then we're also in process of collecting resources and webinars to support teachers' understanding of Zoom and the different features of Zoom because we have committed to district-wide licenses for Zoom for our remote interactive synchronous lessons as well. So that will be a priority. And then, you know, we've tied in, tied in some other tech offerings as well. But I think it will be, I think teachers, when we release the calendar, will see it's a nice combination of trainings that were, that people are asking for in this moment and that will support the return as well as tech support and then time, which I think everyone is feeling like they really need, time with their colleagues, time to plan, time with instructional leaders to structure out what the first couple of weeks will look like. That's a good overview. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions I can answer.
Thank you so much, Kara. So I hope that you heard in Kara's words, the kind of the range of PD that we'll be doing in the first 10 days. I think it, it kind of is representative of the work and kind of the goals that we're thinking that we need to set this year. And, and one of them as a starting point is really being thoughtful about areas that need to improve in our remote instruction, which is another reason why I think we're, we're pleased to be starting in, in our remote plan. And so one of the things that we've been talking steadily about is really the need to create predictable schedules for students and families, to create multiple opportunities for more than one adult to interact with students and to be thoughtful about the needs of students, especially their social emotional needs, which you heard a number of times in Kara's comments about professional development. There's also kind of what we're working on is, is this idea that there'll be multiple opportunities for teachers to give students feedback on their work in our remote setting, feedback that will lead to grades. And so those are some of the things, a few of the things that we'll be changing in our remote plan. And, and we are also actively meeting with our WEA leaders to work on our memorandum of agreement in regard to what will be changing for this, this coming fall as we open school. And so we, we kind of, they're collaborators that we couldn't do this work without and where we're appreciative of their, their input and their thoughtful feedback as, as we work to open school collaboratively. We also need to thank our principals who are working tirelessly with their reopening teams to really be thoughtful about making relationships with kids and really meeting people where they're at. You know, I think you heard in our public comments, kind of the level of concern around safety and, and the fear that people have in, in just returning to school. And we know that we need to address those concerns and kind of work, work through that in, in tangible ways to, so that people feel safe coming back to school. And, and we will do that and we're, we're pleased to report that we will. And Bob Shiroli will be joining us at our next school committee meeting to talk a little bit more about work that we're doing in regard to air quality and HVAC. So, so more to follow there. And so I'd, I'd like to move to our next item and just give a very, give Brendan Kent, our athletic director, an opportunity to just share some information that came out last week on kind of the opportunity that we may have to create fall athletics as well as, so a parallel to this is not just athletics, we're really trying to think about extracurricular opportunities for students as well. Because we know that athletics and extracurriculars are such a big part of experiences that students have here. We really want to be thoughtful about what we can do safely and how we might be able to do that for our students. So I'd like to turn it over to Brendan at this point.
Thanks, Doug. First of all, it's great to be back here on school committee. Miss everybody and look forward to seeing everybody in person. As Doug mentioned, we had some big announcements last week from the Department of Education about high school athletics. I did create a slideshow, so right now I'm just going to walk through this slideshow with everybody, basically just kind of highlighting some of the key points. Just for people to keep in mind though, this is a fluid kind of ongoing developing situation and it could change any day at any moment. And there's also still a lot of unanswered questions out there, questions that I don't personally have the answers to, athletic directors, principals and superintendents don't have the answers to, so. But without further ado, I'm going to jump to the slideshow. So as Doug mentioned, last week, we did get a highly anticipated press release from the governor's office, the MIAA and the Department of Education. And the announcement basically gave school districts the opportunity to potentially conduct high school sports if it's safe to do so. However, as you'll find out in this slideshow, the announcement came with some stipulations. And as I mentioned, there's still a lot of unanswered questions and information that needs to be carefully considered before districts and leagues decide to either opt in or opt out. First and foremost, there was a map developed that, as you can see, has, has a kind of a legend key here for COVID rates in different communities. And as you can see, communities are shaded neither white, green, yellow or red, depending on their COVID rates. And communities that are currently in the red are not allowed to conduct high school sports at this point in time. The MIWA has developed a quote unquote floating season in between the regularly scheduled winter and spring seasons and the months of February and March. Those communities will have opportunities to potentially play at that point in time. The next slide is just kind of a close-up of some of those communities. As you can see, Wakefield, we are in the green right now, but there are a number of communities surrounding us that are in the red, such as Saugus, Lynn, Revere, Chelsea, Everett, Salem. As of right now, everybody, everybody, every school in the middlesex league is, is either green or white, so has the opportunity to compete. Some of the key takeaways from the guidance that came out last week, as I mentioned, fall sports may be conducted no earlier than September 18th. High-risk sports, so those were for the fall, football, cheer and dance, cannot compete at this point in time, but are being allowed to practice. Their seasons have been temporarily postponed, been temporarily postponed to that floating season, as I mentioned, in between the winter and spring sport seasons. School districts do right now have the choice to either opt out or opt in, depending if they fail to, if they can safely conduct the sports. School districts can also postpone certain sports to that floating season. Right now, this is very important, MIWA is currently creating sport-specific modifications to every sport. These modifications may include safety protocols, rule changes, required safety equipment, practice protocols, social, social distancing guidelines for both gameplay and practice and more. Some examples of some of these modifications, for example, in the sport of soccer, you know, I'm hearing that there's not going to be any corner kicks, no throw-ins. So we are, athletic directors and school leaders are really highly anticipating these modifications come out so we can see really what these sports look like. Some sports might be modified to the point where it's not really the same sport anymore. Another key point from the guidance was no, no more state tournaments. So all competition would be regular season in, within your own league. Another semi kind of controversial point to come out of the guidance was that MIWA has temporarily lifted the restriction on out-of-season coaching. Really kind of the rationale was to give kids an opportunity to get in contact with their coaches off-season. So, you know, if this is approved by school districts and school principals, coaches in the spring can now, you know, be in contact with their, with their student athletes in the fall and the winter. Some lingering concerns and challenges right now. So as I mentioned, the schools are awaiting safety protocols and guidance and sport modifications, just to really kind of see what, what they look like. As of right now, there's really no clear-cut safety protocols that have been put out to school districts. Transportation, obviously that's a huge concern for school districts regardless of athletics, but when you think of athletics and the size of some of our teams, it's a really huge concern of ours. Creating equitable access for all students. So, you know, athletic directors are concerned about potential Title IX issues that could arise. For example, if we deem that certain sports are not safe to be, be conducted and, you know, all those sports have to be either female sports or, or male sports, vice versa. We also want to make sure that we're providing access for students that choose to go remote as well as our MECO students. Also, there's a lot of safety training that needs to be conducted for our student athletes, our coaches and our parents. And also schedules need to be made up for competition. And we, as of right now, we don't even know which schools are in, which schools are out. Also concerns over spectators at games. And then another huge logistical concern is facility issues. For example, our Wakefield High School swim team swims at Malden High School. Right now, Malden High School's made a decision to go remote and they've shut down their pool. So as of right now, Wakefield High School, we don't have a pool and we are not the only school in that, in that situation. School districts all over the state are having issues with finding facilities in the major sports, that's swimming, golf courses and hockey rinks. Also, there's major concerns and challenges for our indoors, indoor sports. We heard a few people tonight talk about ventilation issues. Well, a lot of the gymnasiums around the state are very old and don't really have up-to-date ventilation systems in, in their, in their schools, so that's a concern. Also, a lot of school districts have had to convert their gyms into classrooms and Also, you know, right now, school districts may need to purchase additional safety equipment. Also, with September 18th being a start date, it's very short turnaround time. Referees, coaches and other staff members may choose to opt out, which there's a concern over a shortage of referees. Some of the potential concerns over off-season coaching is putting students in a situation where they feel pressured to choose one sport over the other. A lot of schools may have facility issues, really difficulty managing all 30 sports at once and potential cross-contamination if kids are practicing multiple sports at the same time. Also, there's potential budget issues that we need to discuss at the local level. And also just kind of overarching concern about school systems being overwhelmed with... about school systems being overwhelmed with just back-to-school reopening. So, I don't, I don't mean to be negative, I just wanna put that out there, some of the challenges that still do exist for school districts. What has been done so far? So, the guidance just came out last week. The Middlesex League athletic directors have been meeting several hours per day. The Middlesex League has decided to take a united approach to this and make league-based decisions with input from every school district. The league ADs have discussed the guidance, discussed lingering issues, and so far, we've come up with ideas and potential solutions to some of those challenges I just discussed in the earlier slides. We have posed game and practice schedules for our fall sports. And then, just on Monday, the league athletic directors had an opportunity to meet with the league superintendents. We discussed all of these potential challenges, the guidance that was released, and some of our ideas that we came up with for these challenges. The superintendents then had an opportunity to discuss this matter in private, just the superintendents. Next steps, right now, as I mentioned, all of our school leaders are awaiting the modifications from the MIAA and any further safety protocols that might be released. The matters being discussed daily at both the league level and the district levels. And really, we need to know who, who in the league might opt in, who might opt out. Some conferences around the area, such as the Northeast Conference, have decided to postpone fall sports. Right now, the Middlesex League, we're hoping to make a collective decision within the next week or so, so that we have enough time to really pull this all together. So, anyways, that was a lot of information. I'm sure there's a lot of questions, as I mentioned. I don't have all the answers right now. We're, we are working very hard, though, to, to come up with solutions to a lot of those challenges that, that we mentioned.
Thank you very much, Brendan. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, does anyone have any questions for Brendan? Yes, Colleen.
Brendan, you, you kind of, you talked about this, but I think at the, one of the bigger, a, a big question in sort of aligning our remote students who are opting to choose remote.
Yes.
And students who are participating in athletics or hope to participate in athletics, it seems like a big conflict, right?
Yes.
So, if you are choosing to not enroll your student, or the student doesn't want to enroll in our hybrid model, once it becomes a hybrid model, on September 29th, how do we then shift to that student wants to participate in athletics? That's sort of a two-level, you know, your level and our, our administration's level. But I didn't know if you had heard from parents with those concerns. To me, you know, the same risks are there, if not more.
Yeah.
But what have you heard from parents regarding that issue?
So, we, we, I mean, this is all came out last week. I haven't, to be honest, we haven't really got that much feedback from parents yet. The school districts that are going fully remote do have the option of postponing everything to that, that floating season. As athletic directors in the league, we're, as I mentioned, we're trying to make everything accessible to all students. That might be difficult, though, as you mentioned, where some students, families might not feel like it's safe at this point in time. But we do wanna give those students the opportunity, if they decide that they wanna learn remotely but still participate, we, we wanna try to give those students the opportunity to still participate if they, they feel they want to and they feel it's safe to.
So, we are giving them that option for, right, right now, that's...
As of right now, that's, that's what we're trying to come up with ideas on how we can do that. And so, one of the ideas that the Middlesex League athletic directors, we kinda came up with to both address that issue as well as the transportation issue, is we're trying to schedule games on days in which there's not school. So, we're trying to take advantage of Saturdays. Saturdays, traditionally, you know, we don't have a lot of high school events on Saturdays, they usually Monday through Friday. So, we're, you know, hypothetically, if we do have sports, we're gonna have a lot of our games on the weekends. And also, we're looking at some of those fall holidays to schedule a lot of games, as well as some Wednesdays, because some, some school districts in the league don't have school in those days. So, that's kind of twofold, is to give those kids an opportunity that are learning remotely to participate on days that aren't school days, but also, part of that decision, decision was if we can potentially get around the transportation piece, and families go directly to the fields wherever they are at. That's a little bit of a controversial issue, because if you go no buses and have families drive directly, yes, you're avoiding the busing issue, but now you're creating a, a potential problem where you might get carloads of kids, you know, cramming into a small car that A is not safe, and B is really defeating the purpose of socially distancing on a bus. So, you know, there's still, as I mentioned, there's a lot of challenges to this. Right now, as I mentioned, we're just meeting daily, trying to come up with ideas on how we can make the best of this. I, I don't know if I answered your question.
I think, I think it's hard to answer, you know, right now. I just know that those are some of the concerns that I had was, you know, if our students are choosing a remote-only option, how, how much access would they have, you know, because the conflict is sort of there, right?
Yeah.
Those are the reasons why they are choosing remote learning. And then, you, you brought up a great point with the transportation, it's just sort of a layered challenge, you know. You sort of make it safe in one way, but create sort of, you know, unsafe, you know, challenges in another way, so.
Yeah. And, you know, another piece of this is the challenge of the indoor sports. So, we do have two indoor sports in the fall, volleyball and swimming. And I know that was a concern that some of the superintendents brought up, especially when you think of ventilation. You know, we were thinking outside the box, is there some way we can essentially conduct those sports outside? You know, right now, we're kinda open to any, any ideas and just thinking outside the box.
Right. I mean, I think at the bottom line, to get kids in a social, safe, safe social setting, right, being active and, and trying to create some of their experience, right, is sort of our first priority, you know. And whether that moves towards games, you know, in, in the Middlesex League, or does that mean that they just scrimmage each other? I think that there's, there's so many moving parts, but I think that safely getting the kids together.
Yeah.
And giving them that opportunity, you know, sort of sets the groundwork, and then you move from there. So, at least they have, those sports have that opportunity, right, to safely progress right now.
Yeah.
Or, you know, with the, with the guidelines that you're, you're gonna be putting into force.
Yeah. And as far as competitions, you mentioned kinda limiting exposure. One of the ideas that we had is just limiting your, your gameplay to divisional opponents within the Middlesex League. So, freedom teams only competing against freedom teams, liberty competing against liberty. And then, within those, the weeks, if, if we were to have a Wednesday/Saturday game, we talked about potentially playing the same opponent twice in the same week. So, if there was an outbreak, at least we could have, you know, some sort of idea of where it's coming from and, and better opportunity to contain it and shut things down.
Or like our cohorts, you know?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Cohorts for the week, and, yeah, okay. That makes sense. I appreciate all, all of your hard work. It's...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Another, another challenge with many layers, so.
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
Thank you, Colleen. Does anyone else? Tom, you had a question for Brendan?
Just a, a quick one. So, we would essentially be treating remote students the same way we treat homeschooling students. Homeschooled students still have the opportunity to play sports, correct? So, we'd just be treating the remote students the same way?
Yes. Yes, yes, correct. So, if, if we are gonna have sports, we wanna give all of our students equal opportunity and access to them.
Thank you. Any, anybody else have any questions for Brendan?
Mike?
Brendan, how are you?
Good.
I suspect as, as difficult as your problem is now in the fall, it's gonna probably become even infinitely more complex for the winter sports.
Yes, yes. So, you know, right now, we're, we're trying to address the most immediate season, which is the fall, but we, we have already, as, as a league, already started discussing the winter. And you, you are correct. I, I think things get even more complicated from here, at least, at, at least in the fall, the majority of the sports are outside where, you know, you have a better opportunity for social distancing. Things do get a lot more complicated from here. Again, I don't wanna, I don't wanna paint a, a negative, pessimistic picture. You know, we're, again, we're, we're meeting daily, thinking outside the box. We're open to any ideas at this point on how we can make things work, but I think it's a fair statement to say, yes, things will get more challenging as the school year progresses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brendan? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Brendan. One, one just quick note, apparently, our audience could not see the presentation.
Oh.
So, is there any way that we could maybe put it on the website?
We can.
So that if anybody wants to actually read through it, they can do that. We'll put it up on the website. Thank you. Thanks again, Brendan, for a lot, for all that information. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's great seeing you all.
So, and, and just kind of adding a, a few closing comments for sports, I'd like to thank Brendan as well. I know he's collaborated and worked with all of the athletic directors in the Middlesex League. As he said, they've been meeting regularly. They invited us to their meeting on Monday, and we did have a chance to meet as a cohort of superintendents to really think about what, what is doable, you know. And, and, and I think the consensus from the, the group at that time was that we really need more information in the, in the guidance that's coming out that Brendan mentioned. So, there's supposed to be more guidance coming out this Friday in regard to what safety conditions or what other things that we need to take or put into play to be able to execute and, and develop these plans. But this is, I just wanna be clear, that this is reminiscent of kind of what, what we were, were required to do to develop reopening plans, right? And so, and, and what the guidance that came out from MIAA said that, you know, all decisions are local, and they're kind of giving this back to kind of school committees and the administration to work through this. Now, we're, we're, we're gonna do this thoughtfully, we're gonna do it in conjunction with the Middlesex League, and, but we're going to do it with kind of the safety first, and with this idea that, you know, we need to think about how we can practice before we can play, right? We need to think about how we can get kids safely on the field to practice and to do tryouts before we do other things, right? And so, if we have success in day one, that might give us an opportunity to continue this in day two. But it is literally going to be kind of a best-laid plan. We're gonna need to look at the health metrics that will guide us. We're also gonna have to look at kind of the, the condition of the health metrics in our surrounding towns and athletes who might be coming to our town. And so, those are all things that need to be considered. And we'll have more information coming in our next school committee meeting, and we will get this up on the website. Thank you very much, Brendan.
Thank you. Is that all you had, Doug?
That's it.
Okay, next on the agenda are some budget items.
Just a gift.
So, we have a motion for a gift.
May accept with gratitude the donation of $1,000 from Valid8. The funds are to be used towards technology needs.
Yes, we're so thankful and appreciate it.
That's amazing. Somebody needs a second. Did somebody just second that? Thank you.
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing non-roll call vote?
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Kalenia?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Thank you. Before I move on, Suzy, did you have a question?
I had two questions for Doug.
Yes.
I was hoping that you could talk a little bit about the timing of when parents, in particular elementary school parents, can expect to be hearing about their assignments to eat through the morning or afternoon slots and their cohorts, just for planning and childcare and kind of all of the logistics that those families in particular are going to struggle with. And then my second question was, can we have any more information about any kind of testing? I, I feel like you may have mentioned something about teachers having the opportunity to, to be tested, but have we, have we found out anything more about testing for students and teachers that would be optional, not required?
So, in regard to your, your first question about schedules, we, those will be coming next week, right? And so, we appreciate all of our parents that took part in our survey and letting us know what plan that they will be participating in. We had about 20, almost 2,800 respondents to that, so we appreciate that. So, that's gonna allow us to create schedules. I can tell you the principals are working on it actively. So, it will be at some point next week, Suzy. So, that's the answer to your first question. In, in regard to the, the testing, the question, if I understood you correctly, it's in regard to COVID-19 testing for, for teachers that would be optional. We had, we had shared it at another meeting that we are looking into that, and we're still working with the Board of Health on that. They have provided some options, and we're just trying to figure out the, the best option that might be able to work for us. And so, there'll be more information coming within the next week on that as well.
And is there any more discussion about testing students? I know that came up at the last meeting. I don't, I don't know that there was any real appetite for that, but just as a, I know Ruth Clay's comment was, you know, you, you get tested and the next day you could be exposed. But if we had optional testing done in, in the community to get it for families who wanted to have their kids tested, we would at least get a sense of whether we have a whole bunch of asymptomatic kids in town that could potentially spread the virus once they get into school.
So, I, in, in talking with, with Ruth Clay about that, and I'm, I'm going to be joining the Board of Health meeting tomorrow night for a little while, and we, I can get more information there. But one of the questions is, you know, how can we kind of communicate well to give family kind of the information that they need to, to, to find places to be tested locally? That was the first piece. But in regard to creating the same options for students that we would for teachers, you know, I think the, the feedback there was that, you know, we could not, of course, mandate students that are not symptomatic in a public setting to, to subject themselves to testing. And so, so I, I think I'll have more information on that after tomorrow night's meeting. And so, we hope to get that out Friday. We'll, we'll share that information Friday in kind of our weekly update. We've been trying to send out kind of a Friday email, just letting parents know the work we're doing and, and new things that are coming. So, we'll, we'll try to get that out in regard, in our communication on Friday, but we'll also have more information forthcoming, definitely in our next school committee meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzy.
Moving on, we have some subcommittee reports. The first is Chris, Finance and Facilities.
Well, Finance and Facilities continues to meet every Thursday morning at 8 o'clock. We've been getting regular updates from Christine and Doug as to the status of what the spend, what spending is going on right now, that's what they're focusing on, you know, PPE and preparedness for open schools. At the same time, they have to be working on closing out last year. Those final reports are due in the first of October, I believe. So, they've kind of got a, a double-edged sword going. But they're, they're, they're keeping up with it, and I think they're doing a great job. Facilities, Doug pretty much covered, are in, in pretty good shape. The, we're waiting for those air quality reports for all the schools, and the, the summer projects are on schedule. I believe the Doyle is done or will be done for the, their sprinkler system. The roof at the Greenwood should be done, and the leveling set of the galvan, so we're in pretty good shape.
Thank you, Chris. Labor, Tom? Thank you, Chris. Uh, Labor, Tom?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Emmy. Um, so just a, uh, a, a brief report that we have been, uh, meeting pretty regularly with, uh, the Unit A, B, and C, uh, leadership, uh, teams with regard to the, to the reopening of school and all of the, all of the matters, uh, that are under that. It's lots of, um, uh, lots of concerns, uh, being, being raised and being discussed. Um, and I think progress is, is, is well underway. I do want to, uh, make, make, make a couple of, of thoughts, or, or share some thoughts. I want to thank, uh, the W E A leaders and members, really, for all the work, energy, patience, guidance, and professionalism in our discussions. Uh, we've been having, as I mentioned, discussions for, for weeks now. Um, a, a couple of days a week, um, in order to get to a, get to an appropriate, uh, place. I believe that we, the administration, um, and, uh, and, and employees share common views and common interests in that students are best served in in-person teaching and learning environments. That said, we also share common views that we should only reopen buildings when it's safe to do so, as guided by public health data, um, and, uh, our local capacity, uh, to be able to meet those needs. Our discussions with teachers have been positive and focused on those two things, education standards and safety. I'd like to clearly say that the safety concerns, and frankly, in some cases, demands raised by the teachers are fair and reasonable. The safety concerns raised are not an attempt, in my view, to be, to be, to create obstacles, but to set quality standards. I want to thank the teachers for raising and standing strong on these safety concerns. They're not exaggerating the concerns, nor are they seeking ways to delay. The teachers' concerns are genuine. Uh, genuine too, however, are those concerns and thoughts of the superintendent, the administration, and reopening teams on, uh, creating safety-first, student-first environments, driven by public health decisions. I think we stand firmly with the teachers and employees, um, in this, in this dual goal. Um, I think the school department and the town, um, have been, uh, taking many steps to prepare for making facilities improvements, some of which you've heard about tonight, some of which are underway, some of which are being researched and, and planned, um, some of which are still being, uh, 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 still being studied. We are, however, working cooperatively as partners with the union, uh, employee groups and not pushing back on each other, but working to take the right and appropriate steps, uh, because they have the right, appropriate actions. With that, I want to thank, um, members of the, uh, administration who have been working li- uh, literally, um, hours on end uh, to, to come up with ideas, concepts, um, doing lots of research and planning, sharing of ideas. Uh, and also, of course, thanking the, the unit, the leaders from Units A, B, and C in, in their tireless energies to bring us to a positive place. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Um, next is the Student Services Subcommittee. We were supposed to meet last week, but we had to cancel last minute due to a family emergency, so we are in talks, uh, to reschedule that meeting. Uh, next is Policy. Susie?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so the, um, Policy Subcommittee, um, Policy and Communications Subcommittee, uh, has been meeting every week, I think, for the last three weeks now. Um, I'm going to keep this short because my connection is not super good, and we have two policies that we want to lay on the table tonight. The original plan was to lay three on the table. Um, one, we are going to hold until the next meeting, because we have a little bit more work to do on that. Um, you guys should see in your packet the two that we are laying on the table. Uh, one is about, um, the policy on face cover, face covering. So this is a COVID-specific policy that would be put into place, uh, while, while we're dealing with, um, the COVID situation. Um, and this is about, uh, when a face covering needs to be worn, um, individuals who could be excused from wearing, um, uh, face coverings and why that would be, um, when face, uh, masks or coverings aren't required. Um, and then kind of what happens if a student who's supposed to be wearing a face covering is not wearing one? Um, and kind of the, the, how that, that plays out. So that policy kind of outlines those things, and then the second policy that's in your packet is around, um, employee update, uh, employee taking, um, recreational travel. Um, so if staff were to take vacation, um, and leave and go outside of any of the high, um, outside of any of the low-risk states as defined by Massachusetts, there's, um, kind of a, a procedure that needs to be, uh, followed. And so this outlines, um, what staff needs to do if they're taking time off and what would need to happen if they go to a state that it is one of those higher-risk states. Um, kind of how that will, um, how that works. So the, the two policies that we're laying on the table for consideration that we will vote on two weeks from today are around face covering and staff, uh, time-off policies. And again, these are specific to putting them in, in place just for COVID, so they're special policies. And that's really what the team has been focused on. The last times, couple of times that we've met is any policies that need to change on behalf of COVID, and then we have been spending a lot of time talking about communication and how we can improve communication in general. Um, during a time when communication is so important and there's so much information that we're trying to get out to parents. That's it for me.
Great, thank you, Susie. Um, okay, next on the agenda are future dates and agenda items. Our next schedule.
Do we not need a, uh, motion to place him on the table?
Probably do.
Oh, yes, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, so I move the school committee lay on the table for a period of two weeks' consideration. Policy E B C F A, face covering, and COVID-19 employee policy update for recreational travel and mandatory self-quarantine as presented.
Second.
Motion, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote?
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Kalanian?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
And Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, now moving on, uh, future dates and agenda items. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 8th at 7:30. Uh, School Committee Comments. Um, Colleen? Yes, okay, Mike?
Do you want me to go in?
Yes, Mike, please.
Colleen, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh.
No, my fault. No comment.
Yeah. I read your lips.
No commentary, me, thank you.
Great, thank you. Chris?
I'm good, thank you.
Tom Markham?
Uh, no comment, thank you.
Thank you. Susie?
I just want to apologize for not being in a, um, professional-looking environment and unavailable to do motions and play my role as, uh, vice chair tonight, but I appreciate, Chris, you stepping in, and, uh, I look forward to being in a normal place with normal coactivity for our next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Susie. Uh, Tom Flynn?
I just wanted to thank the admin, the Labor Subcommittee, and the W E A, and all the teachers on their ongoing efforts to reach an agreement so we can open school in a safe and successful manner.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, and I have nothing further as well, so do we have, um, motion to adjourn?
I move the school committee adjourned its meeting of August 25th, 2020.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Fair?
That was a yes.
Yes, that would be a yes.
Okay. Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanian? Mr. Kalanian, sorry.
Sure, sure, yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
And Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Thank you all. That concludes our school committee meeting for this evening. We, I hope you have a great night. Thank you so much.